Welcome everyone to our September 12th Board Meeting. So, to kick things off, we're going to begin with our invocation and our pledge. And doing our invocation will be Pastor Eugene Fidel from City Church Marietta, followed by our pledge with Special Ops Officer John Lyons. So if you're willing and able, please stand with me for the invocation.
Thank you. Let's pray. Father, we just thank you for a beautiful day. We thank you for a week that looks like things are finally going to cool off. And we thank you for sunshine, and we thank you for beauty that you made and you created for us to enjoy with you. And this morning, before anything happens, what we want to do is just calm and quiet our hearts because we know that life is busy, it's noisy, for many of us, it's crazy. We have a lot of issues to sort, family drama, life problems, financial issues, all kinds of things that we come into a room like this with. And we want to slow down and steady our hearts and just thank you for the gift of silence. For so many of us, it's uncomfortable, but it's a good thing because it helps us focus, it helps us center ourselves, and it helps us come back to you. And so I pray that in this moment, you would give the men and women in this room the wisdom that they need, the grace that they need, the perspective that they need to lead and to serve this beautiful county, and this wonderful place that we get to all call home. So we fix our eyes on you, and we thank you, and we just say that we love you, and we need you, and we are excited that we get to serve you, and we get to serve the people of this county together. It's in Jesus's name that I pray. Amen. Thanks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful. This meeting is now called to order. So to kick things off, this is kind of District 3 day with Commissioner Burl having our presentations. So first presentation coming up, Constitution Week in Cobb County.
Good morning, everyone. Besides DAR, could the Barbara Hickey Children's Fund come up? We're gonna do y'all together and separately at the end. So these wonderful ladies are all about preserving our constitution and awareness in the schools, in the public, I, and all throughout our country. So the first proclamation goes to the Daughters of the American Revolution, and they're the first four ladies here, oh, five ladies here. Marcia's doing double duty today. She's DAR and Barbara Hickey Children's Fund. So whereas the United States Constitution is a symbol of the tenacity Americans have displayed throughout history to maintain our liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights. September 17th, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of this important document by 39 brave men at the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia. Whereas the framers established a strong federal government able to provide the energy and stability its people require while simultaneously limiting its reach and reserving all powers not expressly assigned to the federal government, to the states and the people. It is vital that all Americans read, study, and understand the greatest document of human liberty, and help protect the freedoms set forth in the Bill of Rights. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document, magnificent document, sorry, and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issues of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, we the Cobb County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd, 2023, as Constitution Week, and commend the old Noonday Chapter, National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, and its supporters for commemorating Constitution Week. We encourage all residents to read and study this magnificent document, and celebrate the 236th anniversary of its creation, and as citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. This is the 12th day of September 2023. So, I would like y'all to introduce yourselves, tell us a little bit about what all you've been doing to prepare, and also tell us about the ringing of the bells celebration on Sunday.
I'll start. Hi, I'm Karen Cavett. I'm the Regent of the Fielding Lewis chapter that's here in Marietta. And we've been doing a lot for Constitution Week. I'm going to let our chair tell a little bit about the schools. But I do want to mention, I think we all know who signed the Declaration of Independence from Georgia, but how many of us know who signed the Constitution that was from Georgia? So we had six delegates go, assigned to go, two didn't show up, two left early, so we were only left with two to sign the Constitution. And that was Abraham Baldwin and William Few. Both served in the Revolution, and both were attorneys here in Georgia. So the Daughters of the American Revolution celebrate Constitution Week, and our chapter, Fielding Lewis, will be celebrating on this Sunday, the 17th, at Glover Park. The program begins at 3:00, at 4:00. We will be ringing bells, just like they did in Philadelphia at 4:00 on September 17th, 236 years ago.
I'm Melissa Tanner. I am the Vice Regent of the Fielding Lewis chapter of the NSDAR, and we are so honored to be here today.
Hello. My name is Marilyn Carol Palmer. I'm the Public Relations Person for Fielding Lewis, and I've been working hard also on ringing the bells. And one of our spotlights for this Sunday will be to ring the historic bell on the square. Please join us at 3:00, and we'll all ring bells and celebrate the Constitution.
Good morning. My name is Jackie Wonder. I'm so happy to be here today, and thank you so much, Joanne Burl, for having us. We have been to 45 elementary schools to our sweet children in Cobb County, and have handed out books on the Constitution, copies of the actual Constitution, American flags, and all kinds of other goodies for our children, in order to encourage the teachers and support the teachers as they go forward in teaching about our Constitution to our youngest citizens. It's been a total joy, and we're excited to continue with proclamations also in the city of Marietta by the mayor, as well as the city of Smyrna by the mayor as well. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm going to go over here for this proclamation. I was on the very, the very first year we started this, I was on the committee for Barbara Hickey's Children's Fund. And these fine ladies are here, and they've been busy too delivering to schools as well. So, whereas, "The United States Constitution is a symbol of the tenacity Americans have displayed throughout history to maintain our liberties, freedom, and inalienable rights. September 17th, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of this important document by 39 brave men at the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia." So whereas Constitution Day launched in Cobb County through the efforts of Millie Rogers in 2010, who was the immediate past president of the Georgia Federation of Republican Women, and the past president of the Cobb County Regional Republican Women's Club. Mrs. Barbara Hickey worked with Mrs. Rogers in the initial efforts, and was joined by the Constitution Day Committee of the Cobb County Republican Women's Club. And the committee delivered constitutions to elementary students in both Cobb County and Marietta school systems. And whereas Barbara Hickey established the Constitution Day Fund as part of the Barbara Hickey's Children's Fund in 2018 to raise money for distributing constitutions to elementary school students in Cobb County and Marietta City Schools. The continued work of supporters is a great way to help educate our youth and honor the efforts of those who came before them. Now therefore, we the Cobb County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim September 17th, 2023, as Constitution Day in Cobb County, and thank the Barbara Hickey Constitutional Day Fund and its supporters for their involvement in the Constitution booklet and efforts to educate the public. We encourage all residents to read and study this magnificent document and celebrate the 236th anniversary of its creation. This is the 12th day, 12th day of September 2023.
Roseanne.
Roseanne's the head of this committee.
Thank you. Well, it was wonderful that Barbara had left this legacy for us to be able to carry on. We packaged and sent out approximately 3,500 constitutions to the children's in both Cobb and Marietta schools. It's always been a great joy to do. Marcia and Rose have been very instrumental in helping this go. We have our contacts at the schools, and they have all of their information. I just get to stand around and watch things come together. So we really enjoy the opportunity. These are our constitutions that we sent out this year, and on the back, we have information about Barbara Hickey, who was a wonderful woman who started this so many years ago, and has kept it coming forward.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Rose Wing, and thank you, Commissioner Burl, and all the commissioners. And I have enjoyed working on this project for several years. We put the constitutions out into the schools, 4th and 5th grades. Marcia kind of makes the contact to the Cobb County schools, I make the contact to the Marietta. And if y'all see me riding around town in the next few days, you know I'm delivering them into the Marietta City Schools and stuff. Thank you.
Well, I'm Marcia Semee, and I'm both on this committee, and I'm a member of this. I'm a retired 8th grade Georgia history teacher, and so having the Constitution out, having the children learn and know what it says is so important. And that's where they start, 4th grade, they get the information general, and 5th And that's where they start, 4th grade, they get the information general, and 5th grade, they go into more detail. So it's important for them to have the document, and they can take it home. So I'm very pleased to be able to be on this committee. Thank you.
Thank you, y'all. Great job, ladies. We appreciate all you do in our community and throughout. God bless you.
Thank you.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one.
Okay, one, two more pictures.
Ready?
Wonderful. So next, we have a recognition of Vaughn Nass, Information Services System Administrator for being selected as the 2023 Information Technologist of the Year.
If I could have IS and 911 come up with Vaughn? We have another hero among us.
They're all friends.
This guy has a lot of support today. What could be better than IS and 911?
They're all friends.
Director. The director's here.
Yes.
Mike. Tell Mike to come over here and meet. Yeah, I want to hold this and present it. Well, today I also have the honor of recognizing Vaughn Nassi right here and his support team from 911 and IS. He's actually an IS employee, but he's assigned to 911. And this year, he is the recipient of the prestigious Information Technologist of the Year. And it is presented by the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials International, APCO International. This recognition is bestowed upon those individuals inside the Emergency Communications Center that have demonstrated exceptional skills, dedication, and innovation in the technical aspects of public safety communications. Vaughn has been an integral part of the Cobb County IS Department since 1998. He started with the county as a Windows Server Administrator and later joined Public Safety IT Support Team. He was assigned to his current role as Systems Administrator with the Department of Emergency Communications in 2015. His responsibilities include development, developing programs and applications, maintaining technical systems and infrastructure, and ensuring compliance with department standards. With over two decades of experience, Vaughn has proven his expertise and adaptability in supporting the technological needs of the department. In recent years, Vaughn has completed several upgrades to the DEC Computer Aided Dispatch System. This is way over my head. I just call Kimberly when I need something on my computer. And Pro-QA Paramount Software and planned and completed a major router upgrade to improve speed, connectivity, and security. He has supported a full redesign of the primary communication center to include all new consoles. Vaughn's efforts have been instrumental in setting up the Endgame Operations Center at Truist Park and a Condensed 911 Center at the park during the 2021 World Series Games. So are you ready for another World Series? Me too. So, thank you all. You've got a great team, Vaughn.
Terrific.
They're in my office a lot, too. So it's great to see the different departments working together, and it's great to recognize Vaughn and honor him for this prestigious award. So with us today, besides IS and 911, is anybody working? We have our Director of Public Safety, Mike Register, our Director of 911 Communications, Melissa Alterio, and our Director of IT or IS, Kimberly Lemley. So would y'all like to say a few words?
Well, we're just so proud of him, you know? What he does not only is a reflection of his competence, but man, he reflects so very well on the county, and we really appreciate you and keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Let me just tell you, APCO International is the oldest and largest organization for Public Safety Communications Officials, serving over 46,000. So Commissioner was correct when we say that this is a highly coveted prestigious award. And let me simplify everything that the Commissioner said. We take advantage of 911 professionals answering the call, dispatching responders, but we could not do that without the behind-the-scenes technical support that Vaughn and his team of peers in the IS Department provide us. So he's the one that keeps us running, and we like to call him President Vaughn. So Vaughn just celebrated his 25th year work anniversary in April, and I can truly say that he has made such a lasting impact on our department, public safety, just this county as a whole. He's just been a tremendous asset to us. He is the definition of customer service with a smile. Anybody that's ever worked with Vaughn knows he's always got a smile on his face, and he's such a great example. And he's probably one of the smartest people I know, but he also has one of the, he is a person of the highest character as well, and he sets such a great example for us. I've learned so many things from him through the years, and we are so proud of you and your accomplishments, and just thank you for everything that you do for us.
Thank you. Thank you.
as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
Could I have Luke and Patricia Miller and the Colleys come up? We're here to recognize September as Childhood Cancer Month. So we've had some great presentations this morning, and this one is very special. And it affects a lot of children, and we're thankful for the groups that have organized to help fight childhood cancer. And I'm going to read a proclamation for a group called Mighty Millie. Her grandmother is here, and support from other families and Cobb County Tax Office, Luke. Whereas, "Childhood cancer affects 47 new children each day nationwide, a battle that impacts entire communities, including parents, grandparents, siblings, friends, and neighbors. Pediatric cancer remains the leading cause of death by disease for American children under 15." And whereas, "Childhood Cancer Awareness Month is recognized in September to increase awareness of the disease, the need for more funding and research, and to support those families in Cobb affected by childhood cancer. We also recognize this month in memory of every young person lost to cancer, and we unite behind improved treatment and brighter futures for young people everywhere. And whereas, "Families who have a child who has experienced cancer treatment often suffer from long-term effects from the same treatments that helped them survive and need additional emotional support and medical care long after the treatment is completed. And whereas, "Family support and advancements in childhood cancer research are often funded by private charities run by individuals who have personally witnessed the long-term effects and outcomes of childhood cancer." Now therefore, we the Cobb County Board of Commissioners proclaim September 2023 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Cobb and recognize all those who commit themselves to advancing the journey toward a cancer-free world. This is the 12th day of September, 2023. So with me today is Mighty Millie's grandmother, Patricia Miller. Luke is an employee in our tax office, and he kind of got me together with the family to present this. And then I thought it would be nice to have even more support and introduce this family to friends of mine and neighbors, the Colleys, Lynn and Dan Colley, who are also going through the same thing with their grandson, and he's having treatments now. So it's kind of a, I know it's very emotional and kind of sad too, but there's a lot of support out there, and the more we can do for awareness of childhood cancer, funding and research, the better this world will be. So I'm going to present this to you and ask you to say a few words about Mighty Millie. I'll hold it.
Okay, thank you. I'm the proud grandmother of Millie Maraczek. We're our family, our residents of Cobb County, and we have benefited from the care that we've received in the metro Atlanta area. Just a little background, 44 children a day are afflicted by childhood cancer, but only 4% of cancer research is applied for children. So there's a much greater need for child cancer research. Treatments are somewhat outdated, and there have been watered-down chemos and radiations from what adults have received. So it's more important than ever that research and sharing of the information with the physicians is needed. The Mighty Millie Foundation has created a popsicle project where 62,000 organic, sugar-free popsicles have been delivered to 64 pediatric oncology hospitals. This was done as a result of Millie waking up from sedation and being upset, and if she could just have a small moment of joy with a popsicle, it'd made the process a whole lot easier. Our foundation raised last year, our first year, $75,000 in donations, and we're seeking more again this year to assist with research, public awareness, and the popsicle project. We thank Cobb County for your assistance.
I'm Luke Rector. Nick and Claire are my good friends, and thank you, Commissioner Burl and the rest of the Commission for allowing us to be here and bringing awareness to this. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for being here, and remember, this is not only Constitution Week, but also Mighty Millie Month, Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, September. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
All right, moving into the public hearing portion of our meeting. So we will have a public hearing presented to us by internal audit.
Good morning, Vice Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. This item is to conduct a public hearing for the Supplemental Internal Audit Services where the contract fees will not exceed $150,000.
Thank you very much. And the rules of a public hearing, unlimited speakers. To address this particular item, you will have three minutes to speak to this item. There is a timer on the podium, and so with that, I will declare the public hearing open.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Craig Harfoot. Man, I remember forever and ever, people wanted an external audit of Cobb County finances, but I guess this is it. This is an internal audit, correct? You can answer later. Anyhow, the thing is, it's, it has to be impartial from somewhere that's not involved in the finances of the county, I would think, in order to get a true picture. And I would think the Sheriff's Office would need this after that last meeting of all the, where does the money go? But anyhow, that's all I had to say. I hope you enlighten us more as to the nuts and bolts of this thing, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to provide comment on this during this public hearing? Okay, with that, I will declare the public hearing closed. Please approach the, thank you. Please enlighten us on the internal audit portion of the work.
So the internal audit, it's independent and objective, part of the governance of the county, but this particular contract is actually for Supplemental Internal Audit Services to augment our staff, and we really use these services for specialized services, particularly for IT auditing and in a lot of the areas that we may not have the specific expertise that allow us to get it done in an efficient manner. And then, of course, the external audit is, there's an RFP that goes out for that as well, and that's performed and overseen by our Finance Department. So we have both at the county, which is a great thing.
Thank you, and I believe internal audit helps us prepare for external audits.
We can, absolutely.
Any other questions from the Commissioners?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And public comment.
As the Board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review the related meeting rules. When you come forward, please state your name, and if you're speaking on behalf of an organization, all comments should be addressed through the Chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the Board, but an opportunity for speakers.
And I believe internal audit helps us prepare for external audits.
We can, absolutely.
Any other questions from the Commissioners? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And public comment.
As the board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review the related meeting rules. When you come forward, please state your name, and if you're speaking on behalf of an organization, all comments should be addressed through the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the board. The comments should not be impertinent, derogatory, offensive, or slanderous, to that end, the board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give the others the right to both listen and to be heard by treating each other's with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the board or the administration of Cobb County Government, and as mentioned, there's a timer on the podium. First speaker is Dan Barth.
I'm here to address you, and I never know exactly where I'm going, but you hit the nail on the head today. Constitution.
But just for the record, state your name and continue on.
Dan Barth.
Thank you.
Correct name. Anyway, we got onto the subject today about the Constitution. Somebody's not reading or listening to the Constitution. The state of Georgia has a Constitution. It sets forth the rules and regulations to protect everyone's freedoms. Somebody's in violation. Again, I voted in 2018 for a commissioner. I haven't voted since 2018. Do you understand? I haven't put anybody up there on that board. I don't have the right to now because of what someone did up there. You don't have that right. You never had that right. You took that right. I guess it's practice to get ready to go to Washington where you can do what you want up there, too. But I'm not Trump. I'm not going to sit there and tell you over and over that you stole the election. I'm going to tell you that you manipulated an election. I asked Lynn Brody at the town hall to indict all persons that had anything to do with this. I just want an indictment. I want you to go before people that will listen to the case and hear the merits. Did you interfere with an election that you had no business interfering with? It seems that if Joanne was elected over on the east side of Cobb County, who gave you the right to say, "Well, Joanne, now that you're elected over there, you come back over here"? Who gave you that right? I don't understand where that right came from. This was never a black-and-white thing, because if I had my way, I'd be putting a black man up there, maybe Perry Price, I don't know. Barry wants the job. The thing is, we have to come up with a solution to this problem. You leave, you're not running again. I understand why. I really do. I think that the state's going to finally come in, or the court's going to mandate, mandate that you return to the Constitution of Georgia. You don't have the right to rewrite a constitution. What board of commissioners in Georgia decided that they had a right to rewrite a constitution? You don't like the Constitution? Go downtown and petition to rewrite it. Now, at every meeting, I have to have two sit here and say that they're opposed to the way this meeting is being run. Then I have three that say, "I'm Democrat, and I'm going to do what the hell I want." You know, and being a Democrat's not bad. We've got a sheriff now. He's a Democrat. Craig Owens is black and a Democrat. So you can't say, "I'm prejudiced against anything or anybody." I don't play that game. What I play is the Constitution. You violated some law somewhere, and if you got indicted, Lord help me, I hope they take it to the full extent, because I don't think you ever had the right to step in and say, "The people in my area cannot elect anybody. We don't even have a right to vote again till what, 2026?" So the whole time, I'm not bitter about this. I've never been bitter. God knows, I want to make this better. And the only way to make this better is put some effort in to correct the problem. When you went in there and you said, "We're going to change this," did you have a plan to change everything? How could you control the voting? You couldn't control the voting. You didn't take the time to look at what you were going to do and how it was going to affect everything. So I'm going to walk out of here tonight. My head is going to be held high, and there's going to be a couple of you that have to think you're up there, not by state law, not by the Constitution of Georgia. You put yourself in up there, it's kind of shaky grounds to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Monica Delancey.
I reside in Mapleton, District Four. First, I want to make some announcements, what's going on in our schools. This week, Pearl Brook High School will be hosting their college night on Thursday, September 14, to get students ready for life after high school. So very excited about that. Also, this Thursday, September 14, Better Gray Miller School will host their open house. And this Friday, Bryant Elementary School will host their Hispanic Heritage Month Festival at Bryant Elementary School from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Hispanic Heritage Month is September 15 through October 15. Some news from the community. We Thrive on Riverside Rental Association was awarded three, I want to say, power grants within the last couple of months. This summer, we were awarded the Georgia Power Grant for $3,000, which helped with our National Night Aliquas Crime Event this summer. Also, Cobb EMC Nonprofit Foundation awarded We Thrive Riverside Rental Association with $1,500 to help with renters advocacy and also educating our youth with different after-school activities. And Greystone Nonprofit awarded We Thrive on Riverside Rental Association $4,000 to assist with our Fall Youth Bowling Club and also renters advocacy. On tomorrow night at 5:30 p.m., there will be a Riverside Community Meeting at Premier Learning Academy. Premier Learning Academy is located at 7225 Premier Lane, Ostel, Georgia. And at the meeting, it's going to start at 5:30 p.m. At the meeting, Cobb County Police Department will give updates on public safety. We will also have a presentation by our health, public health director, Ms. Lisa Crossman, who will update the community about something special that's going to take place in the area real soon. And also, our state representative, Terry Cummins, will be present to give community updates as well. And we will be sharing resources as well as connecting people with residents with resources as well. So that's tomorrow night, September 14... I'm sorry, September 13, at Premier Learning Academy. Also, I do want to share that, on a personal note, within the past 10 months, me, Monica Delancey, I had to go back and forth to Cobb Master Court because I was facing what we call a retaliation eviction. Last year, January of 2022, there were new owners that took over apartment complexes where I have history with for over 12 years. And when these new owners took over the apartment complex, the residents met with the new owner, representative, and presented the representative with some concerns, such as when the pool would be open, when you're going to fix these windows that were broken, and some other concerns they had about vacant apartments. And then we also shared with the regional manager, the owner representative, about what we do in the community. So the response to that was, "We're going to sever ties with your resident activities, We Thrive Riverside Rental Association, Monica Delancey." That was the response in February of 2022. And then the next response is, "We're going to cancel your lease, Monica Delancey." And then the next response, which happened in September of 2022, "We're going to stop collecting payments, and then we're going to file eviction on you for non-payment." So after 10 months of going back and forth of dealing with this, that regional manager left. The new owner representative spoke with me and wanted me to give everything I was doing in the community and said to me that, "Hey, we want to dismiss those charges, dismiss that from eviction court. Bad enough that people are in eviction court because they can't afford the rent, but now we've got people in eviction court because of personality issues or whatever. We're going to dismiss that." So thankfully, on September 8, that case, after 10 months of going back and forth, has been dismissed, and we can carry on as usual. So I just wanted to share that. So, We Thrive on Riverside Rental Association, Renters Bill of Rights, right to organize, and right to not have to be subjected to non-lease renewals or prohibit non-renewal leases because of personnel issues with management staff. Hopefully, this can be something that's researched upon, because I believe that will alleviate Cobb County Master Court of about maybe half the cases if it was not just based on them just saying, "We just want our new leases." So thank you very much again, Monica Delancey.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Christine Rosman.
Good morning, Commissioners, Christine Rosman. And I celebrate the Constitution Week, and for those of us who appreciate the Constitution, respect the Constitution, follow the Constitution, and don't treat it like an old operating manual for like a DVD player. It is alive and well, and our best feature for me would be that First Amendment right, First Amendment to redress our government, and that we take that opportunity to do it. We can question things. We can question what happened like yesterday 22 years ago. What happened, really what happened with 9/11? Question DEI. Are you going to go ahead and put that on a new video? Kevin Redmond does a whole montage of me talking about DEI. We can question the DEI diversity, equity, and inclusion. We can question ESG, environmental social governance. We can question feeling like we've taken a crazy pill because it keeps our government keeps expanding and expanding, and, "Oh, we're just trying to help, we're just trying to help." And I don't know about you, but every time I go to Publix, if I can get out of there less than $50 with two small bags, that's a good day. So I don't know what it would be like to have children and to have growing children and to be working at, you know, minimum wage and have to take care of a family, but all I know is that things are impacting us. And if it's impacting one of us, it's impacting all of us. And so I do hope that you, like, start looking at that. Instead of having a fun time growing the government, how about the people that are funding the government? How about if they are not burdened so much when you're giving out, what is it, like $10,000 for like angel investing in somebody that wants to start up a new business? I think that $10,000 could go somewhere else. It could help a community. Yesterday, I went to the Board of Elections meeting, and I questioned them about, like, what's going on with our elections? You know, this should be like, seriously, the top priority for the entire county, and it's kind of put in with like senior services and things like that. This should be like up there with public safety, with the Sheriff's Department, with the Police Department, with 911. And it's not. It's not even a priority. It's like this loosey-goosey thing of like, "Oh, it was just 19 ballots that went missing or that didn't get counted, and oh, just that." So if you were like working for a bank, would you be able to say, "Oh, yeah, my drawer's not right today, missing some checks, missing a couple thousand dollars"? You wouldn't have a job. Yet there's not accountability, and there's like this loosey-goosey thing with elections until it comes to like having like a Six Flags event to get more people to register to vote. And it's kind of like, how about being a better steward of our elections to begin with? And how about holding people accountable? So I guess everybody knows that even in Fulton County, if you question election, you get indicted, including a former president, getting indicted for questioning an election. So hopefully, I don't get hauled away because I'm questioning an election. Even, by the way, everybody must know this one. Governor Kemp admits anybody can hack a voting machine. Hello? And at the same time, yeah, that's Republican governor. Doesn't matter if you're Democrat or Republican. Voting is voting. Everybody can get compromised. And just because it's not your team that gets compromised this time, it might be next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Craig Harfoot.
My name's Craig Harfoot, and this is a serious thing. I mean, I was brought up in many churches growing up. Started off Christendas and Methodist, got baptized Baptist, so I was exposed to the whole spectrum of Protestantism. And even Catholic, believe that or not. I read the Bible twice. I recently reread Revelation and Genesis, and it's troubling because of what's in the news today. The Refraides River is drying up. The Mississippi is drying up. We had a horrible earthquake in Turkey a few months ago, Marrakesh over the weekend, Libya's flooding, Beijing flooded, California filled up in a week. Vast displacements of water. They say it's climate change, but in Revelation, it says one of the angels poured a vial on the sun, and it got hotter. And the thing is, that comes after Babylon. And that's what I came here to talk about. We got a Constitution, yes, but it became not of people, but of corporations. It became, you know, corporations ensue people. They get bigger than people. They are becoming monolithic. They will take over the world. And I got thinking, I always wondered what Antichrist was. It's a non-living being. It's a corporation that runs AI. And with crypto, right here now, and everybody's got to have the mark. I mean, this stuff is all right out of Revelation. And I don't see any churches teaching this. They said, "Oh, it can't be us." But guess what? The statue on New York Harbor, the Green Liberty, was given by the French masons to the American masons, and because of their help in the French Revolution, they got rid of their king. And it was, the title is "The Goddess of Babylon." And it, she's wearing a toga. And I read the rise and fall of the Roman Empire, and basically, in this series, in this book, it's saying what the toga means. And during the days of Caligula and that period, when the Romans liked young boys better than their wives, their wives took on, paid the prostitution tax, and wore togas so they could do what they wanted and not get divorced. They had laws then, too. And so there you go. And on the other coast, in Bohemian Grove, there's this big stone owl that our public officials, even people from Cobb County I've read in the paper in the past, have gone there. This stone owl is called Moloch in ancient Babylon. It's who they sacrificed children to. And I mean, all these things are just young kids getting cancer. I mean, all this stuff is just too close to... I mean, all this stuff is just too close to ignore anymore. And I always wondered, well, so here we go. Babylon the Great. If the kings of the world conspired to kill Babylon the Great and the captains of the ships of the seas will see Babylon burning and, and, um, and the kings that conspired to kill her, say, where are we going to sell our goods and who's going to buy them? Now, if that doesn't describe the largest buying nation in the world, I don't know what does. I mean, at one point it could have been another country. But with solar cycle 25 and all this ocean temp, the big hurricanes we're getting, these are unprecedented events. I mean, it's never happened. And, um, when you see the oceans kill a third of the fish, that's in Revelation too. So I, I just encourage everybody, read your Bible. It doesn't take long. You can read it cover to cover and let God reveal what he has to say to you because he, you certainly can't ignore it in face of what's going on right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's the last of the public speaker.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Moving on into the consent agenda. Before we get there, however, we have an item to add, so that is going to require a vote. And if my colleagues would like to submit their statements before, or motions on the table, you can do so now.
Yes, I would like to submit to the clerk. For the record, my statement is reflected in the minutes on page 253 of the agenda book.
And I too would like to submit my statement as found on page 253 of the current agenda for the minutes.
Okay. With that, I'd like to motion to add the following non-agenda item to the end of the consent agenda, and that is to authorize, it's an HR item, to authorize settlement of workers' compensation claim on behalf of Brittany Robinson.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Called to question. Motion passes four to zero with Chairman Cupid absent. Thank you. Now we're going to motion to, a, a motion to approve the following items on the consent agenda as revised. We do have one revision with the water system. It authorized execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Second.
Thank you. Called a question. Motion passes four zero with Chairman Cupid absent. Oh, thank you. Good point. All right, moving on to the regular agenda. And this time I shall not forget discussion.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, County Manager. J.D. Lorenz on behalf of the Transportation Agency and have eight items for your considerations today. First, the department recommends the Board of Commissioners approve change order number three final to the contract with SDNC Incorporated, a savings of the project amount of $389,218.15 for roadway improvements on Soundtown Road, project number X2610. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction, further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Hey, Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Called a question. Motion passes four zero with Chairman Cupid absent.
Thank you. Next, the department recommends the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of an FY23 surface transportation block grant program application to the Federal Transit Administration in the amount not to exceed $1 million for transit Americans with Disabilities Act sidewalk improvements, project number B2750. Authorize the acceptance of the award funding, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman or her designee to execute the necessary documents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Called a question. Motion passes four zero with Chairman Cupid absent. Next.
Next, the department recommends the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with D&amp;H Construction Company Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $181,327.15 for drainage repairs on Clintwood Drive, project number B2206. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Called a question. All those four, motion passes four zero with Chairman Cupid absent.
Next, the department recommends the Board of Commissioners ratify previous action by the County Manager, authorizing emergency drainage repairs on Muscadine Trail in response to a sinkhole, approve project number B2297 to the 2021 County Wad Unit Price Contract with Chatfield Contracting Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $117,748 for said repairs, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved. Second. Discussion. Called a question. Motion passes four zero with Chairman Cupid absent. Thank you.
Thank you. We ask that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number two to the resurfacing contract 2022-1, local roads in District One with CW Matthews Contracting Company Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $115,958.90 for resurfacing of county maintained streets, project number B2901, and authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Called a question. Motion passes four zero with Chairman Cupid absent.
Next, we have the Board of Commissioners ratify previous action by the County Manager authorizing emergency repairs to a segment of Powers Ferry Road in response to a water main failure, approve a contract with CW Matthews Contracting Company Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $339,813.20 for the Powers Ferry Road, uh, roadway restoration, project number W2424. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Called a question. Motion carries four zero with Chairman Cupid absent.
And lastly, we have for you, the recommendation from the department is for the Board of Commissioners to ratify, I'm sorry. Did we just do that?
This is the second to last.
Second to last, I apologize. Previous action by the County Manager authorizing emergency repairs to a segment of Buckner Road in response to a water main failure, approve a contract with CW Matthews Contracting Company Incorporated in the amount.
He's on 50. We're, we're on 49, but 50.
Forty-nine is.
I'm sorry, say again.
We're supposed to be on, yeah, go ahead.
Did I skip one?
Forty-nine. Sploes, the 2011. Sploes.
My apologies. How about we do that one? How about we ask the Board of Commissioners to approve the revised budget and current schedule for the 2011 Transportation Improvements Program funded primarily by the 2011 Sploes Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax and authorize the corresponding budget transaction for the 2011 Sploes Transportation Improvements Program budget and schedule.
You've got this, J.D. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Called a question. Motion carries four zero with Chairman Cupid absent.
And we'll do the last one now. The Board of Commissioners ratify previous action by the County Manager authorizing emergency repairs to a segment of Buckner Road in response to a water main failure, approve a contract with CW Matthews Contracting Company Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $91,812.95 for repairs on Buckner Road roadway restoration. Project number B2952, authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Called a question. Motion carries four zero with Chairman Cupid absent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto parks.
Good morning, Commissioners, Madam County Manager. We have two items this morning. Our first item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Breedlove Land Planning to provide professional design and construction administration services for the conversion of natural grass athletic fields to synthetic turf at Wallace Park and Lost Mountain Park under the 2022 Park Sploes Program. The rectangular fields at Wallace and Lost Mountain get an enormous amount of play and the conversion of these fields will help the playability after rain events and provide a better playing area. We ask the BOC approve the contract with Breedlove Land Planning in amount not to exceed $98,500, authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Called a question. Motion passes four zero with Chairman Cupid absent.
Our second item is to approve a contract with All-Star Lighting and Electrical Services to supply labor, equipment, and materials to replace lights at Fuller's Park under the 2022 Park Sploes Program. The conversion of metal halide lights to LED lights will save money on energy consumption and give the fields better foot candle coverage over the existing lights. We ask the BOC approve the contract with All-Star Lighting and Electrical Services for amount not to exceed $1,002,096, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Called a question. Motion carries four zero with Chairman Cupid absent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners and County Manager. Our item this morning is to request the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchasing director to purchase Microsoft Server software licenses under provisions of a Department of Administrative, Administrative Services contract with Dell Marketing LP in amount not to exceed $563,876.52, 2016 Sploes Project X0010, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Called a question. Motion passes four zero with Chairman Cupid absent.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners and County Manager. Property Management has two items this morning. Property Management would like to request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with DH Pace Company in the amount of $76,282 for the installation of overhead doors at the Fleet Car Service Facility located at 1940 County Services Parkway, a 2016 Sploes Program X0911, and authorize execution by purchase order through the Purchasing Department and further authorize corresponding budget transactions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Called a question.
Uh, the second item is to ask the Board of Commissioners.
One second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The motion did pass though, four zero with Chairman Cupid absent. Proceed.
Uh, the second item is to ask the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Capital City Electric LLC in the amount not to exceed $310,000 for the replacement of the electrical system at Juvenile Court located at 34 Waddell Street, a 22, a 2022 Sploes Program B0910, and authorize execution by purchase order through the Purchasing Department and further authorize corresponding budget transactions.
Thank you. Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Called a question. Motion passes four zero, Chairman Cupid absent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Public Safety has one item this morning, to approve supplemental agreement number two to the contract with Batson Cook Company for the final phase of the new Precinct Six Police Station in Northeast Cobb. This is a 2016 Sploes Program that was approved. In order to proceed with phase two of this approved 2016 Sploes Project, it is requested that the Board of Commissioners authorize a fund balance appropriation in the amount of 2.2 million to sup, to support supplemental agreement number two with Batson Cook for the final phase of this project. We're recommending that the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number two in the amount of 2 million to the contract with Batson Cook Company for the final phase of the new Precinct Six Police Station, 26 Sploes Program X1041, as well as the necessary owner's contingency in the amount of 200,000, which brings us to the 2.2. Authorize a fund balance appropriation within the general fund in the amount of 2.2. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
With excitement and pleasure, motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes. This is a long time coming. I think it's the last of my 2016 Sploes Projects. And I just want to say thank you, Director, for bringing this home as soon as you got here a couple, few weeks ago. You hit the ground running with this. You took us all on a tour to show us the shape of the building and what needed to be done. And I appreciate you championing this for all of us. And I want to thank the Board for their support, hopefully when we vote, and the County Manager as well. The constituents have been emailing and asking, when are we opening Precinct Six? And as I have explained, with many of our Sploes Projects, we are over the budget, budgeted amount. So with this agenda item, we'll be complete and construction can start again and finish and hopefully be in there, depending on Travis's oversight in the next six months or so. So I appreciate all you've done in the short time you've come back and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, of team effort and thank the Board for their support, the County Manager for her support, and also the Police Department's done a phenomenal job in their plan going forward on how to implement and stab this.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Director, for the tour on last week and showing us some of the challenges that the building is currently facing. But for the benefit of the public, can you just share with us what some of those challenges are?
Okay. As you know, recruiting is an issue across the nation.
I'm sorry, if you can just.
As you know, recruiting is an issue across, across the nation. And we, just like any other local government, we're trying to not only fill the vacancies, but fill those vacancies with competent individuals. The Police Department and the Fire Department, all of DPS, has a stringent selection process. But with that being said, um, talking with property management and looking at some of the issues surrounding Precinct Six, as you know, Precinct Six is about 50 to 60% complete. It's going to take approximately 2 million to complete it. And with the increasing and continuing, and continuing rise in construction of materials, certainly if we don't finish the precinct now, which this is what the community voted on, the funds to be used for, is for Precinct Six, is actually going to cost the county more in the future in order to complete the precinct. But another factor is that when you have a building that's not, no one's there, you know, we worry about the health of the building and we've already seen some deterioration out there. But with that being said, hopefully full speed ahead and as we start our sequential manning of the precinct, I think that as soon as the building is completed, where is that on Gordy Parkway? It really is kind of in the middle if you want to look at it, Precinct Four, which is East Cobb, and Precinct One, which is North Cobb, is going to almost immediately impact the citizens and give value, especially for the surrounding population because the chief has come up with a staffing, not 24/7, but for administrative and law enforcement personnel to be there at a certain time, let's say from nine in the morning to 10 at night initially. That does two things. It, it helps us understand that there's still a vacancy issue that impacts us fully staffing it, but doing it in a sequential manner gives immediate value to the citizens where they can come there if they need law enforcement assistance, they can do that. If they need to get a report or, or some other type of administrative function, that can happen too. And as we travel along the timeline, as our vacancies begin to dissipate and disappear, we'll start to slowly staff the precinct fully. we'll start to slowly staff the precinct fully with about half the beats with the second phase and then the third phase is to bring it up to a fully staffed precinct. And the reason that we use precincts, Commissioner, Cobb County is a very populated county. And when I say populated, the population is consistently growing and when that population density becomes traffic density. And one of the things that we really, really attempt to do from a public safety standpoint, law enforcement, fire, is have short response times. And using a precinct model, it helps us, again, instead of having five precincts, have six. And that will assist when a citizen needs assistance, that we'll be able to get there in the shortest amount of time in order to render whatever assistance is needed at that time.
Okay, thank you. And this is a 2016 Splash Project. What percentage of the building has been complete? And just for clarification, the $2 million is for the complete build out, not to staff the precinct, correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am. About 6, 50 to 60% of the building has been complete. The front of the building basically has been completed and the back half has not been completed. And the 2 million is for the build out. Of course, we add in an additional 200,000 for contingency in case of the run over possibility. But that is for the building itself. We, when I say we, the department, the county, will have to understand that there will be some staffing actions that need to take place in order to fulfill their charter of that precinct.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead, Pearl. Would you? You're good.
Okay.
Yes, all right, thank you. Certainly we do must be done.
Thank you.
Make it happen. So with that, any other, did you want to share anything? Called a question. Motion carries four zero with Chairwoman Cupid absent.
Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to our appointments section. Yeah. So this is actually an item that will require a vote and, one second. Yes. So since this is your, would you like to make the motion?
Yeah, and Mr. Mintz was here earlier, but he had to leave. But I would like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Stephen Mintz to the Civil Service Board. Second.
Discussion.
And he replaces Cheryl Stevenson.
Thank you. Gamberl.
I cannot support this agenda item, and it's not because of the appointee. It's because of the process and the lack of clearly understanding the process this board goes through to select an appointee. The board received an email stating that the appointee needed to meet certain requirements. There were names submitted that met those requirements, but those individuals were never contacted to have a discussion about being appointed to this board. So without knowing how we're truly doing appointments, except for submitting names and then somebody arbitrarily picking a name without giving consideration to all, yet we sit here and talk about D E and I, yet we fail to include people that we don't know. We only go with the common names. Therefore, I cannot support this agenda item.
Thank you. I think that's a great point to bring up, that our process does need some refinement on selecting names. And I believe there was a request for Commissioners to speak with other Commissioners on different names that were proposed, but I didn't.
If that was a request, that request was not given to me, that that needed to happen. So again, here's a breakdown in the process where it's not clearly understood by all five of us on this board, how the process works to making an appointment that is a joint appointment by a board.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
What was the meeting request you just mentioned? I couldn't hear you.
Oh, I was just saying, there was a-
Email.
Thought that everyone would just kind of communicate with the other Commissioners who they were interested in having on there.
Was it an email?
It was an email from the Chairwoman that, to request nominations and with a, I guess, recommendation that they maybe come from alumni of Cobb 101. And I submitted a name outside of Cobb 101 because I thought it should be opened up to all. But the email also said that if you submit a name, you have to have the three votes because it does have to be approved by the Board. So I know Commissioner Gamberl submitted two names who I believe were Cobb 101 graduates or alumni. And I don't believe Mr. Mintz is Cobb 101, but he expressed an interest in serving. So I recommended his name. And then we got an email from the Chairwoman that he was selected. So I don't know where the breakdown was, but that's what I received. So I thought it went to all of us, the initial emails.
No, I do think that there's, like I said, room for improving our process. We can proceed with this vote, but I think the point is that we have other board appointments where we kind of run into this issue as well. And so having some clarity on that would be beneficial for all of us. With that, any other discussion points? Okay, called a question. Motion carries three, three to one with Commissioner Gamberl on a no vote and Chairwoman Cupid absent.
Just for a note, this was a revised item with the spelling of the name and approval, not announcement.
Thank you. All right. So back into public comment. Okay, thank you very much. And so we'll move into the public address, and I will go last. Commissioner Gamberl, you've got the floor.
Thank you. Touch, climb, honk, and explore the various vehicles and equipment and learn more about the professions, professionals that use them. Come check out the big trucks from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. this Saturday, September 16th. You can find it all at the Town Center at Cobb Mall in the back parking lot by the food court, which is 400 Ernest Barrett Parkway Northwest in Kennesaw. Tickets are available at the entrance or you may call 770-852-3270 for more information. All proceeds will benefit the Cobb County Safety Village. Okay, so I'm going to just go ahead and continue. Cobb 911 has a restoration garden that opened last year on April 13th of 2022. Today, the garden is continuously being tended to by our Cobb 911 employees. The team members were out last Friday, early in the morning, pulling weeds, trimming, and planting a few new plants. This garden, known as GROW, which stands for Growth, Restoration, Oneness, Wellness, provides a safe and serene space for our 911 professionals to unwind and relax. The GROW Project came to fruition with help of countless sponsors, friends, and volunteers. And from here on, it is up to the Garden Committee to maintain this beautiful space. And lastly, you can join me along with special guest Councilwoman Cheryl Richardson from Marietta as we continue our conversations at the next meetup to promote community engagement and support healthy living. The next walk and talk will be 9:30 on Wednesday, September 20th, or 27th, I'm sorry, at Fair Oaks Park with special guests being, again, Councilwoman Cheryl Richardson. And also Precinct Three Major Bollock. Fair Oaks Parks is located at 1465 West Booth Road Extension in Marietta, and it has great shaded areas along the walkway. We will meet up by the tennis courts and start from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Burl.
Yes, Willow will be there. And then also Cheryl, Councilwoman Richardson has a couple pit bulls that I believe will be joining us as well. Or rottweilers. Rottweilers.
They're big too. You better hold tight to Willow.
Willow's big.
So this past Saturday, we were honored to be in the East Cobb Parade. I thank Commissioner Sheffield and Chairwoman Cupid for joining me. It was a beautiful day and couldn't be any nicer weather. Wasn't raining and it was a little cooler than it has been. So we appreciate that. And also a shout out to Michael Brantley, our Parks and Rec Director, for constructing our float again. It was a great day. Also, on Saturday afternoon, we celebrated Rose's second Gotcha Day. As you know, Rose is the comfort dog, therapy dog for the DA's office, and her handler, Angela, is great about bringing Rose over to give us some therapy on the third floor as well as with the courts and with children in the court system that have to testify. She's a great asset to the DA's Department, and we thank her. And this is a picture of her big celebration. I mean, there were games for the kids, cookies and cupcakes and a big sheet cake. So they did it upright for Rose. Congratulations to our Police Mandate 62. Last week, I had the honor of, and Commissioner Gamberl and I had the honor of attending the ceremony where we had 17 officers come into the fold. And some junior officers joined us too, in the picture below. They're adorable and had their Halloween costumes already, dressed up as junior police officers. So hopefully one day they'll be official in Cobb County. And that was great. We thank you for your service. As mentioned earlier, for Constitution Day, September 17th, this Sunday at 3 p.m., the Daughters of the American Revolution will celebrate the ringing of the bells for U.S. Constitution Day in the square at Glover Park. So please come out and join us. I'll be there. And it's a great way to recognize our Constitution and continue to follow it. Okay, now we've got code amendments coming up. So next Tuesday, the 26th, will be, I'm sorry, two weeks from today. Our work session at 1:30 will, the Chapters 10, 50, 78, 134, and Definitions will be presented at work session at 1:30. And then we'll start the public hearings on October 10th and 24th with a vote to amend these on the 24th at our seven o'clock meeting. They are online, so you can look at the whole package at cobbcounty.org. I think they're on the homepage and also in Community Developments section. And Coffee with Your Cop is coming up Tuesday, September 26th, from 9 to 11 at J. Christopher's and Eastlake Shopping Center, 2100 Roswell Road. Officer Justice on the right here will be there. And I'm sure we'll have some Precinct Four officers as well to answer any questions and just conversation with our police. And I think that's all. Thank you.
Fantastic. Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. District Four News and Updates. National Hispanic Heritage Month is observed annually from September 15th to October 15th to honor the contributions of Hispanic-American citizens. Hispanic Week was established in 1968 by President Lyndon Johnson and expanded to a month in 1988 by President Ronald Reagan. During National Hispanic Heritage Month, the U.S. Military honors both fallen and active-duty Hispanic-Americans who served in the armed forces. 61 people of Hispanic heritage have been awarded the Medal of Honor. Help us celebrate the contributions and influence of Hispanic-Americans to history, culture, and achievements of the United States. The Silver Comet Trail will be closed at Anderson Farm beginning Monday, September 18th, and will be closed for three to five days, weather permitting, while Colonial Pipeline Company performs routine maintenance on its underground pipeline just east of Anderson Farm Road. Signs will be posted at trailheads and at points along the trail. The North Georgia State Fair returns to Jim Miller Park on Thursday, September 21st through October 1st. This year's fair promises to be bigger and better than ever with live music, petting farms, flower shows, food, and one of the largest carnival midways in the U.S. Thrill-seekers can look forward to rides like the Wildcat Rollercoaster, Georgia Mountain Lift, and the Mega Slide. Jim Miller Park is located at 2245 Callaway Road in Marietta. Admission is $10 for anyone over the age of 10 and free for everyone under the age of 10. Join the Mabelton Improvement Coalition for its Second Annual Economic Development Summit on Friday, September 22nd, from 9 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. The summit is for entrepreneurs who want to start a new business or transform their existing business. Join industry leaders, businesses, and trade associations as they focus on Mabelton's growth, networking opportunities, and access to resources to drive commercial sustainability. The event will be held at Riverside Epicenter located at 135 Riverside Parkway in Ostel. The cost is $50 per person and breakfast and lunch will be served. Earn while you learn, Cobb Works presents another cycle of its successful Power Up Program. Power Up is a pre-apprenticeship that offers up to 16 weeks of no-cost training for plumbing and pipe fitting. You can earn while you learn with paid-on-the-job training. Support services such as transportation and childcare will be offered to those who qualify. Class will begin on September 18th, and interviews will be held between 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. on Wednesdays at 463 Commerce Park Drive, Suite 100 in Marietta. No experience is needed. You must be 18 years or older. A drug test is required along with state identification, social security card, and reliable transportation. And finally, join me at Freeman Pool Senior Center for a Welcome to Fall Gift Basket Class on Friday, September 29th, from 10 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. Come out and create a harvest masterpiece of fall treats to show off to friends and family. All supplies and goodies will be provided. There is no cost to attend. Freeman Pool Senior Center is located at 4025 South Hurt Road in Smyrna. I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. From the office. Yesterday marked the 22nd anniversary of the terror attacks on the World Trade Center that took the lives of nearly 3,000 people. It is a day we will never forget. In the aftermath of the horrors on 9/11, our country unified. We leaned on each other for support, and it's my hope that we'll also never forget how we trusted our brothers and sisters and loved our communities. Makes all the difference. So August, of course, was, if you remember, our community focus. Every month we have a community focus. We focus on education. Was the Teacher Supply Drive. 2023 D2 Teacher Supply Drive was a huge success. Thanks to the Cobb community, we collected six full boxes of new teacher supplies. This supply drive helps ease the burden for Cobb teachers who spend their own money on basic classroom supplies. Thank you to Kids Care for supporting our Cobb teachers. They really represent the fact that kids do care. And also just want to call- And also just want to call out two other pieces. We closed out our capstone internship program and had our showcase event as well. It was pretty well attended and people from around the community got a chance to see what the students were up to and working with our office. And then also we have here with us, right behind Megan, two of our commissioners for the day, uh, one from Willer, one from Walton. Got Aina and Miles who are joining. They sat through the entirety of the meeting today and have been learning all about what commissioners do and how the county operates and just appreciate them for being here. All right. September, community focus is transportation. So we invite you to explore the future of mobility with our Transportation Forum, which will take place at the end of the month, uh, September 28th from 5:30 to 8:00 PM at Fuller's Park. And you can scan the QR code or register on the screen now. If you have any questions, please contact Megan. And the Q2 Quarterly Report, uh, so that is, is time for that to come around. We'll be also providing a little bit of Q3 updates in there. But the D2 Quarterly Report will be held on Tuesday, October 27th from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM at the Boy Scouts of America Cowart Room. More details are to come and you can scan the QR code to register. Okay. From the community, Register Now Fall Break Camp. Are you looking for a fun camp to keep your children having fun over the fall break? Registration is now open for Fuller's Recreation Center Fall Break Camp. Campers will enjoy five fun-filled, energy-packed days with sports, cooking, fall-themed arts, and crafts, games, and more. You can call 770-509-2737 for more information. And then lastly, double-clicking on the Coffee with a Cop, uh, with a Cop. Chat with your local police officers at J. Christopher's Restaurant from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM on September 26th. Please, please come hang out. It'll be a good time. And that, oh, not the last thing I will say. I do want to provide just some closing remarks. Uh, we did lose a very, um, active, dedicated member of our community, Marvin Shams, uh, recently. And, uh, he was over our housing authority and just appreciate his commitment to our community and the service that he, um, that he gave. And also just, yeah, he even came to all the Saturday morning huddles to provide insight on new things or new initiatives that were coming out of the housing, the development authorities. Yeah, housing authority. But just appreciate him. That concludes all of my comments for today and the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.[1137.71]